Good evening. The meeting for the Bothell Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 25th, will come to order. Let the record show that all members are present and accounted for except for Commissioner Stahl, who is absent and excused, and Commissioners Batuello and Cave, who I am anticipating will be joining us. Any non-agenda public comments? Hearing none. We have no minutes to approve today. Any new business from any members? None. We'll move right to our public hearing. And there are two items on our agenda this evening where we will continue our public hearing of the 2015 periodic plan and code update. So our initial review will be of the Housing and Human Services element. And Mr. Gary Hassler will do an introduction. And I understand we'll have about a 10-minute presentation, and then we'll proceed from there as to how to review our element on that particular item. So Gary, I'll turn the agenda over to you.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Commission. As the chair has already announced, this is the initial review of the Housing and Human Services element. And the Commission will recall that because we're proposing to delete the Community Services element, some of the policies in that element are being moved to the Housing element, and it's being renamed. On the dais in front of you tonight, I've given you a letter from the Housing Development You've probably had almost as much time to read it as Mike and I have. I just saw it today. Mike just saw it this evening. So there's a lot of information in there, including a request by the consortium to strengthen some of the policies in the Housing and Human Services element. Mike and I haven't really had a chance to really think about that or even discuss their request. So I think what we'll probably ask you to do tonight is to let us digest this and come back to you with the recommendation the next time we hear this element. But please do read through it, and they've got some interesting comments. As you can see, Mike Stanger from Arch is with us again tonight. You all met Mike when he came with Arthur Sullivan a few weeks ago to give you a primer on housing issues. And just for those who may be watching on TV, Arch stands for a Regional Coalition for Housing. And in this case, they act as an extension of city staff for housing issues. Arthur Sullivan will be joining us in just a little bit. Arch has a Citizens Advisory Bureau meeting tonight in Redmond, so Arthur is there presently. Arthur is working with Dave on the accessory dwelling units issue, so Dave Boyd is also with us. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mike Stanger for a brief presentation for you.
Mike, thanks. First, Gary, thank you. And Mike, thanks for joining us. Welcome to our meeting. And what I'd ask you to do is if you could keep your comments in the 10-minute range for opening, that would be appreciated. And then if there are some specific questions you have of us that you'd like a response, let's start with that, and then I'm sure each of the members that are here will have some comments and questions for you on the packet that was presented to us.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. So our objectives tonight -- yeah, this is right. The objectives that we were giving, or that we understand to take into this comp plan update, basically fall into the three types. One is that the city thought of this as a major update, meaning that they wanted to try and pare back as much as possible to make the plan more concise and focused. And so we've tried to streamline a number of things. In the course of that, as you know, it's been proposed that the community service element be dropped and a number of those policies be moved into housing. So we're now calling this Housing and Human Services element. And so we'll have a chance to cover some of that tonight. But that consolidation is part of the streamlining effort. Second, there are a number of issues. Things have changed since, over the last 10 years or so, since the last comp plan update. And the comp plan is a long-term plan and not an issue-oriented strategy, but we need to address the things that we know now that we didn't know 10 years ago. And so there are a few matters that have emerged that we're trying to address here. And kind of along with that, the region has updated policies such as the King County wide planning policies. Snohomish County has updated countywide planning policies. Both of those provide framework for your comprehensive plan. And so we're suggesting some amendments to your housing element that help this plan conform to those. I just wanted to remind you of a couple of key points in the King County policies in particular, that the housing needs of all of the whole county are met in a proportional way for each jurisdiction. Not necessarily in the jurisdiction, but each jurisdiction makes an effort to address their share of the countywide needs for housing, including needs for the income groups that you see in special needs housing. And each jurisdiction is entitled to determine, based on their own conditions, what's most appropriate for them. So paying special attention to the income groups or the economic segments of the county and how the city's housing stock shapes up against those, these are figures that were in the housing analysis we presented last time. And so for very low income, the household, 11% to 12% of the households in -- now we're talking about both counties in your case, are in that very low-income category, less than 30% of median income. We're talking about $26,000 a year for a family of four. 1% of the city's housing stock is affordable at that level. And for low income, 30% to 50% of median income, again, 11% to 12% of the households, 10% of your local housing stock is affordable in that range. And then you can also see in moderate income, 50% to 80% of income of the median, rather, 16% to 17% of the households make that amount of money. 21% of your housing stock is affordable in that range. We put up King County's overall housing stock to show that yours is similar, a little lower in the very low income. Now, in the next point about local jobs, another striking similarity of Bothell to King County is the way that your average wages compare similarly to those around the county. So your working population is very representative of the whole county. And then the third point being that the opportunities to create new housing, half of that is in mixed-use areas of the city, namely your downtown area. So those are some things to keep in mind. And we tried to keep in mind when looking at the plan amendments. So our plan amendments fall into three major groups. One is simplifying, clarifying, consolidating, as I said. Second, the emerging issues, support for housing in centers, because that's where half of your housing capacity lies, with some attention to how affordable that housing in the centers is going to be. We are going to suggest that there be a clear connection between increasing development rights for proponents or applicants of housing and them providing some affordability in exchange for those increased rights. And then two more things that we've been trying to promote in all of our cities, some attention to sustainability and also to the needs of homelessness around the county. And then the last point, again, to reinforce that the countywide planning policies in both counties call attention for -- ask every city to call attention to their proportionate share of the county's housing needs. So at this point, then, with that short introduction, I'd invite you to launch into the review of the draft. I appreciate any comments in any way that you want to go through. I'm prepared to, if you want to go page by page, or commissioner by commissioner, or I can, you know, bring up specific amendments if you'd like. I would try to focus on what I would consider the substantive ones rather than just the editing things. But however you want to do it is perfectly fine.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. I think from a process standpoint, what I'd like to do is have any of the commissioners provide any initial questions or comment on your presentation and on the memo that was provided to us. And then as far as a strategy for actually reviewing the document itself, I think if we can be very, very disciplined, maybe a little bit even more than we were last week, and I'm probably speaking to myself as much as anything, but go page by page quickly, I think that can give you, give all three of you some of the guidance from us in terms of our thinking. But I don't want to, in the name of haste, gloss over some areas that are important. So as an opening, I'll just open it up to the rest of the commissioners. Are there any questions or comments of Mike and his presentation? Commissioner Steadman.
Mike, did I misunderstand? Did you say that the average income for very low is $26,000 per year?
No. I'm sorry. Let me pull that out. I think that was -- I may have said that, but I would have been mistaken.
Reason I ask is because I thought I read somewhere in here it was like 36 or 46 or something like that.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, that is correct. For very low income, 30% of median, a family of four, this is using 2013, it was $26,000.
$26,000?
Right. Yes, sir. And for a family of two, $21,000.
We're showing different numbers on that.
We're showing -- I'm right there with Commissioner Steadman on a question there. On our page HHS 3, 2014 showed very low income, maximum income for a family of four, $36,400. So let's just, let's not belabor it, but maybe Gary and Dave take that as a point to just kind of have our numbers right. And that was one thing I did, is I just kind of quickly got my calculator out and wanted to just kind of do one to make sure I understood income, the percent of income towards housing, et cetera, et cetera. And I couldn't find the numbers. And then you had a maximum housing cost of $662 per month. I couldn't figure out how you calculated that either. So I think we're kind of together. Let's just really nail our numbers and how we're calculating that. If you could just take that as a general feedback from us.
Okay. I'm not sure. I haven't found the reference that you're making, but these --
We're looking at, this is the packet that we were provided. And in the opening memo, there's a document after the memo that is basically an introduction to the -- it's basically our strategic document. And there's an opening statement to it, and that's what we were with you on that. And we're just trying to make sure we calculate this smoothly.
Okay. I'm sorry for the confusion on that. We'll clarify that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Clark.
I have a couple of questions. And I don't believe I was here for the June 4th meeting where I think some of it was discussed, but I just noticed that, you know, 60% of the document seems to be struck, and I'm just curious, you know, just real quick background on why that is.
Sorry. I'd just like a little bit of background, I guess, on what the reason for that is.
What you see struck is about eight or 10 pages that were devoted to what's known as the Housing Needs Analysis. That comes before the policies and goals. And what we've proposed to do is to substitute for that section the updated housing analysis that we presented on June 4th. It would be an appendix.
Okay.
So we didn't plug it in here. It would be, it's referenced in the change here.
Okay. And Steve, a question for you. As far as our questions are concerned, I have some questions about the goals, policies, and actions. Do you want to weigh on that? Yeah, let's hold off on that. But definitely as we kind of go page by page, I do as well. But so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Any other opening comments or questions? None? The only one I would add is that, just the whole definition of affordability. Can you, is, when we say something is affordable, what do we, as a general kind of top, you know, how do we define that word?
In a general sense, when we say affordable, we mean that the housing, the cost to live in a given housing unit is 30% or less of the household's gross income. Now, as a matter of course, when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about housing that's affordable to people, to moderate, low, or very low-income households. But in a more general sense, that 30% threshold applies to anybody.
Okay. And also, there was a couple, we talked about area median income, and then we talked about maximum income. And I kind of wanted to make sure, we were talking about two different numbers there. One is maximum, one's medium. And then also, is it median for the county, or is it median for the city of Bothell? And it seems to me that we should be, and I guess this is something, you know what's going on outside the city of Bothell, but are we using the median income for the whole county? And if not, shouldn't we be focused on income levels for the city of Bothell itself?
We often refer to it as the King County median income, but technically, it's the area median income, which is King County and Snohomish County. Which it kind of becomes appropriate in Bothell in particular. It's produced by HUD, or it's defined by HUD from year to year.
I know that in our financial report that comes out every year, we produce a number that is what we call our per capita income. That's a different number again, but it spans both King and Snohomish County. And I just think it's pretty important that if we're going to start producing some numbers around particular income, that we have the straight, Bothell is unique, and that it spans two counties.
So I could speak.
And please identify.
I'm Arthur Sullivan.
Oh, hello, Arthur.
I think Gary said he introduced you, and some of you may remember you from the last meeting, but some of you weren't at the last meeting. The median, it just happened that the median income that we use is the same for Snohomish County and King County. So it doesn't, so we're fine in terms of that approach. The second is you asked a question about city versus using a county median. And in general, with the housing programs, that we often, in terms of measuring affordability, the standard is to use the countywide. Some people may say, but our city's different. As most of you are aware, Arch is a membership of cities across East King County, and we find our median incomes are all over the place in East King County. However, the demand for housing is primarily coming from your workforce and people, you know, so that's really, and that's, your residents don't necessarily reflect your workforce.
Yeah, good point.
Whereas the median income countywide is reflecting workforce more and sort of overall population. So it's a way of sort of equalizing the field, saying, out there, there's this demand, and so that's why we generally use the countywide median income in doing the work.
Understood. Thank you.
May I clarify the question earlier about the difference in the draft that says that 30% of area median income is 36, 460? And why the big difference between that and the $26,000? The problem is that this is a typo.
Oh.
So it should have been 26, 460.
Okay. Well, there you go.
Apologize for that.
On that same page, at the top, there's a referral in the first sentence, this is page HHS 3, to Appendix X. East King County housing analysis is attached. I didn't see that, so I don't know if that's going to be attached later, or if that'll, and I know that we're moving towards more of an electronic document where some of these things can be links rather than paper appendixes, but I just, maybe I missed it? Or is there an Appendix X, at least in our packet?
Well, that was the report that we made last time. And we made the decision not to send it out again.
Understood. Great. Got it. Thank you. Hearing no further questions, I think at this point, what I would suggest that we do is we move to page HHS 23 and move crisply through these pages, page by page. And I believe that, I have some questions and comments, and I believe some of the other commissioners do as well. Let me just say overall, some overall comments from me. I like basically how it was organized in terms of some overriding goals, and we kind of linked goals, policies, and actions to the first goal and then the second goal. And so I support how that's being organized. One question that, no, excuse me, that's all I had at this point. So let's start with HHS 23. Are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners on this page?
I have one.
Commissioner Clark.
On HHS P1, the strive to maintain no less than 60% owner-occupied residences, is there a background for kind of the basis of that number? Is that kind of a percent that most jurisdictions, most cities strive for?
This is a somewhat unique to Bothell policy. It's something that has some history behind it. And I would say, in terms of why we feel like it's fine to keep it in there, since that's something the city had an interest in before, is if you look at data generally, about 63% to 64% of all households are owners. It got up to the high 60s just before the recession, and some people wonder how much of that was because of the funding world out there being too loose, and it's now dropped back down to around 64, 65. So this is kind of a way of saying, we'd like to kind of, if we can, strive towards that balance that we see in general when you look at broad communities.
And those numbers you were just using are area-wide, the 64%?
They're both area-wide, national.
But I guess what I'm wondering is, how is Bothell doing? Do we know how Bothell is doing relative to that area-wide standard?
Well, you're above 60%, and in fact, in the analysis, there is a chart that will show you exactly where you are at, and I'm going to see if I can find it real quick.
While Arthur's looking for that, I can affirm that this actually goes back to the very first iteration of the comp plan back in 1990 when we pulled it together. That was a policy that the council at that time wanted to see, and it's been there since.
I had a question on that. So I mirror the question from Commissioner Clark, and I just would say, given that the years that have gone by since our last review, is this the kind of, in preference towards more renting, more apartments, kind of in light of the financial realities that have changed in the last five years? I mean, do we want to even promote any particular number? Any thoughts on that?
The genesis, and I wasn't there in 90, but I was there in the last, and I've heard from people in 90, it's an idea behind people with ownership vote, and so they want to hold a 60% when you're voting for levies and different things. So they wanted to have, I hate to say it, but it was kind of an idea that they wanted people to have an interest in our community, and when they vote, they want them to have, they're voting for their interests, where people that own property, that's the way it was explained to me. So that's why it was at the 60%.
Okay. I think those are all good comments. I don't think we have to decide it tonight.
And I don't know that that needs to happen. I'm just saying that's kind of the background of why it was there.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I throw one more thought in there? The reason I ask is that in the last, I guess, really six years or so, starting with the recession in '08, it seems like there's been a trend nationwide, and you would know this much better than I would, toward rental, and you even mentioned that, versus homeownership, and that that could be a fundamental shift, not just a temporary thing, but kind of a realization that the lifestyles of people have changed enough where homeownership is going to become less of a priority. And I think my very limited understanding is that the American dream of owning a home started, I think, shortly after World War II or something like that. And the question, I guess now, is we're now, what, 70 years beyond World War II? And nationally, what are you finding out? What are they seeing about that trend? And is there going to be government changes in, say, the tax deduction allowed for mortgage interest and that kind of thing that would be promoting rental over ownership?
Right. So all excellent points. And if you have that material from the last one, you'd see on page, I think it's A28, owner occupancy in Bothell went from 65 up to 60 in 1990, up to 68, and is now down to 66%. If you look at King County as a whole, it went from 63 to, actually, down to 60%, and then they're now at about 49, 59%. So that's where you're sort of seeing a little bit of that trend. East King County as a whole is right at about 65% and has stayed relatively even. One of the trends we saw, especially like 10 years ago, is a lot of the times, people equated ownership with single-family versus multifamily. So one of the big trends we've seen in the last 20 years is that's no longer true, that a lot of the multifamily built in our region, especially East King County, is ownership. So that's one thing that's sort of offset the balance of types of uses. So I think to some extent, that's diminished some of that issue. The issue you're raising, we don't know yet. It hasn't sunk that far down. Might it get down to where 60 might be towards the high end? I think we're still five to 10 years away from knowing that. I think that people still see it. The mortgage deduction, it's been talked about for three, four years. It's still there. So it's hard to say. In my work, we did some work, and we were doing some value judging, and what are the values behind people's perspectives related to housing? And I once had the audacity to say, ownership isn't a value, ownership is a means to a lot of values. And after about two weeks of a lot of debates with people, I realized, no, in this country so far still, ownership is a value. Now, will the new generation see it a little bit differently? That's a really fascinating question, and I think the next five years will tell you a lot, because right now, we're having a lot of multifamily rental built, but now we're starting to see condos built again. And so was it economy, or was it market demand that we didn't see this first wave of new multifamily be rental? Because we're now starting to see condos again, being built in East King County. So it's up there. And you've still got like a 5% cushion, 6% cushion here. So I think it's a good thing to note. I'm not sure, you know, you can go either way. I think there are other reasons why I think that point was put in there, but I'd say, I don't think in the next two or three years, you have to worry about that policy per se. But you're raising some very good points.
Thank you. Good discussion. And again, as we know, this is our initial review, so I don't think we need to make a determination on this particular policy, but let's do, think about it further and definitely come back to it on our next session on this. Moving to page, the following page, page 24, are there any comments or questions from the commissioners on that page? Seeing none in initial, I have a couple, and there were several points in here where we talked about capital improved, or infrastructural maintenance in residential areas, and the use of our capital facilities plan to do that. I usually think of capital facilities as capital investments and not used for infrastructure maintenance. I'm thinking of the bottom particular action, HHS A3, so capital spending versus maintenance and operation. So any feedback or any comments for me on that, as to why we would want to have a capital facilities plan program in infrastructure maintenance? Just take it down as a point to follow up on.
I can't speak to Bothell, but I do know a lot of times when I look at CIP plans, a portion of that is taking existing roads and maintaining them so that, you know.
I mean, I'm not talking about improvement. I mean, definitely improvements in widening sidewalks, et cetera. It's definitely capital improvements, but the word maintenance has kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, that policy is specifically to speaking to things like street sweeping and cleaning.
Right, exactly.
And maintaining sidewalks and the other types of infrastructure maintenance that the city does engage in through Public Works. But maybe the language could be revised a little bit to be clearer.
Just this idea of capital spending versus operational spending. Let's just get clear on that. That was the only comment I had on that page. Let's move to the next page, page HHS 25. Any questions or comments from any of the commissioners on that page? Any questions or comments from any of the commissioners on that page?
I have one on HHS P11, promote the retention of existing mobile manufactured home parks. What is... Just to clarify, what are... What is the... When you're talking about the very low income, the 30% of median income, where does a... Typically, where would a mobile home park fall in the range of those different income brackets? Is there a standard for that, or...
We'd have to get back to you. I think there's... You've got different kinds in your community. And some would argue they own them. And so in terms of the cash outlay for the household, it can be affordable at 30% of median, because all they're paying is for their taxes and utilities. And so I think you could see scenarios where people at 30% of median could afford it, because they maybe had... Especially like a lot of seniors. Now they're on very fixed limited income and might be in that range. If you're looking at someone who's buying some of the newer... You know, more established ones, probably it's going to be in the lower end of the moderate income range, the 50-plus, because of the acquisition price. And then... But some of the older ones, even their acquisition price can be pretty low and reasonable and would probably be closer to 50. So it's going to probably depend on if they are having to cover the cost of the acquisition or if they've... To a point where they've covered that already.
I see.
So you have two different answers.
Any other questions on that page? I had a couple. I went ahead and pulled the RCW on manufactured homes. There's three of them actually, both defining them as well as... And we certainly want to have our policies and our strategy reflect the RCW. So no doubt about that. There was one statement in here about whether or not we permit new manufactured homes that after June 12, 2008. And I don't know if you're familiar with the RCW or not, but I just wanted to get a clarification as to exactly what the RCW is requiring with regards to manufactured homes. See, Bothell, in my opinion, and again, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I think we've been pretty hospitable to mobile home parks. And I'm not... I don't necessarily want to see us change that. The only thing that I would say on P11 of that same page, where we're talking about promote the retention of existing mobile home parks, I probably would be more comfortable with the word permit rather than promote. And again, I have lived in a mobile home myself. I have family members who do. And I see that as a very important key part of our housing strategy. But I just want to make sure we're meeting what really is in the RCW.
So a comment on... I mean, which could be potentially fine, just sort of distinguish those two words and how I might look at them different from a policy point of view.
Right.
You're relating to the land use element, or the land use regulatory component of it. Another would be, why you might use the word promote, is actively try to help, if a park is threatened, try to help something happens so that it doesn't go away. So if, for example, in Redmond, a number of years ago, there was a group who goes out, nonprofit group who buys existing manufactured home parks. And that property was going to be sold and redeveloped into multifamily housing. And so it was actually preserved from... So it's not a regulatory issue. It's a, how can we maybe help do something else to keep that housing opportunity in the community?
Yeah, good point. And it's a good example of where a one-word change in policy can have some significant action changes. Gary?
Thanks, Stephen. I'd like to add to that, too. We deliberately used the word promote in the original iteration of the plan, because we, unlike many communities, we have a mobile home park overlay in our plan and zoning designations. And that overlay was seen as a means to promote preservation of mobile home parks. So I think the distinction between the words is actually fairly important.
Seeing no other comments from any of the commissioners, we'll move on. Page HHS 26. Any comments or questions on this page?
I have...
Commissioner Clark.
HHS G3? Is that... Am I reading that correctly in the middle of the page?
Right.
To ensure opportunities exist throughout the community for housing affordable to all economic segments of the population. What are we... How are we doing that? How is the city doing that now? And I'm kind of coming at it from the angle of, what sort of code is there that incentivizes landowners, developers, that kind of thing, to include an affordable housing element or do an entirely affordable housing project? Is there a density bonus that can be gotten? And I ask this question because I know that Bothell, in my estimation, relative to other local jurisdictions, is pretty behind on things like planned unit development ordinances that allow you to get a higher density by... With some trade-offs and that kind of thing. I'm wondering, are we also behind on the affordable housing aspect?
So I'll let Gary or Dave talk about, like, in the downtown, from a policy point of view, and then I'll pick up on some other themes. Because I... Are there programs right now in terms of the downtown specifically around affordability for density? Or is that still up in the air?
When we did the downtown plan, there was some discussion about adding incentives. But in fact, the downtown plan actually, for the most part, downzoned. We already had 65-foot heights in much of the downtown subarea. And we created a more tiered approach. So since we were not adding density, it was hard to add an incentive for more density. So there isn't currently.
So... But again, sort of like with the last comment, this policy speaks to more than just land use regulation. So to illustrate things that this city has done, that's why I wanted to get clarity. I can remember exactly where it landed, is you made a piece of land available, catty corner from the senior site, that was then made available for lower-income seniors that, I believe, has units at... It's either at 30 and 50% of median or all at 40% of median. So there are... So there is an action where you use land. You have participated, not as directly as some cities, by using general fund dollars, but you use CBPG funds, which is a federal pass-through, through the Arch Trust Fund, which means you've helped fund a whole wide range of stuff around East King County, with some of it in your city, but mostly in other parts of East King County, that are serving all different income levels. We're going to talk later tonight about accessory dwelling units. That's considered more of a moderate, but it's still an affordability level. So the idea is there's a whole wide range of land use and fee waiver, or land... Making land, or participating in the Arch Trust Fund, are all different ways that you can land on different levels of helping out with affordable housing. And in fact, I believe in the local section, did I... What did I else... I'm trying to miss something that we had that you've done over the years. But yours and your mobile home overlay, I think we would argue that's also helping preserve... So there's a wide range of types of things, and that's what this goal is trying to get at, is setting up a wide range of strategies.
I agree. I guess... So that, in that particular example you used, was that land that the city owned?
Yes.
That they offered at a reduced sales price?
Correct.
So I guess what I'm referring to is, it seems to me that the best way... One of the best ways to do this is to get the private...
Right.
Parties to embrace it as well. Well, I think, as we all know, most of those private parties are in the business to make a profit. So how could we encourage it while still allowing them to make a profit, is what I'm getting at? And I refer to the PUD ordinance because it's a very... To me, it's a very similar thing that we... Bothell has a PUD ordinance that I think has been used, I don't know, as of four or five years ago. I think it'd been used once in 20 years or something like that, because it just didn't offer enough incentive for developers or landowners to use it. Is there... Maybe there just should be an action or something that would talk about how we might develop strategies for encouraging or incentivizing developers?
So as we go through... We'll have to look through here. There may be one or two places that are opportunities to do what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay? Because, good point. We did talk about downtown, but they said you weren't really doing upzone. Like, we do have a number of cities who have done that, because it's a clear upzoning they did. It's hard to do it otherwise. You know, you've got to give them something.
Yeah. I'm not just specifically talking about the downtown area. I'm talking about, as a general rule, even in residential subdivisions.
And I think that you'll see, we may have a couple places that address that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll try to note those when we get there, as we go through them.
Thank you.
We should also mention that some of the commissioners aren't familiar with the Housing Strategy Plan. I know Commissioner Gastineau is, because he worked on the original Housing Strategy Plan. But we have a document called the Housing Strategy Plan that lays out a lot of different strategies for achieving the goals and policies within the element. And those strategies are prioritized. And the last... The first time we adopted it, the commission and then council went through those priorities and actually said, this one's really important to us, this one not so important. There are some strategies within that plan that address...
That was one of the two I was going to...
What Arthur's been talking about. We'll be bringing that strategy plan back to you after we've completed the elements of the plan update. It's more of a... It's not even a code update. It's something a little bit different. But one of the items we need to talk to you about, I think, tonight possibly, in terms of that strategy plan, is something Mike and I were talking about before the meeting, is how do the actions in the element relate to the strategy plan?
Right. So, right. So a general comment for you all to keep in mind is, on a comment like that, there's potentially one of two responses. And that's why I said there's two places where. One is, hmm, that's a policy-level issue. So we need to have the language there that sets it up. Another is, it's more of a strategy. And that's where the strategy... So you don't necessarily have it in here, but when we do the strategy plan, the idea is those are specific actions you could take that would implement the policy. So there's sort of this fine... You know, sort of this artwork of... And every city draws that line a little bit differently, of where you want a thought to show up as a policy and where it can show up as, I got a general statement, we'll cover it in the strategy plan. Either way, we want to note these points and make sure that by the time we're done, you feel like it's being addressed. Okay? And that's why I'm saying there's two different places where we may have something. One is exactly what Gary was saying. And do we have the general statement one about whenever considering density increases to look at affordability on this one?
Yes.
Yeah. So for a number of cities, we have a policy that says, whenever looking at zoning changes, consider opportunities to link affordability to that zoning change. And so it sort of is a broad statement to do what you're saying.
Okay. I just have one more quick question. The strategy document you're referring to, is it part of the comprehensive plan?
It is. It's a... It's just... Go ahead, Arthur. Sorry.
It's a policy that you will do one, but it's not explicitly the comp plan.
Oh, I see.
The comp plan says you will do one.
And was that something that was discussed at the June 4 meeting?
No, it wasn't. And I was going to suggest that because some of you haven't seen the Housing Strategy Plan before, we will send it to you so that you can see it and know what's in it, know what it looks like. So that when, as you're going through this... And I apologize, we probably should have done that for you before, but we didn't... Honestly, we didn't want to throw... Between giving you the primer on housing, sending you the element, and sending you the strategy plan, I think we would have overwhelmed you.
Okay.
But we'll send you the strategy plan so that you have it and know what it looks like and know what's in there, so that when we come to it after September, you'll be more familiar with it.
Thank you.
I just had one other... I just had one other question on this page. Up towards the top under A4, we talked about, through the subarea planning process, we'll evaluate the current mix of residential zoning classifications and et cetera. I'm familiar with the subarea planning process for downtown. Do we have a subarea planning processes for other parts of Bothell?
We do. We have 16 or 17 subareas now, subarea plans now. And they're a...
Is there a... But is there a uniform process for planning in those subareas?
Yes.
I mean, I know that downtown has been...
Yes.
Thoroughly exercised.
There is. If you cast your mind back when we... Back to February, when we talked about the entire process for this periodic plan and code update, the process we're going through now is to update the major elements, things like housing and human services, transportation, et cetera. The second part that will begin in September and for the rest of this year and early next year will be the subarea plans.
Okay.
And we'll go through that process. They are essentially a subarea-by-subarea refinement of what you're going through now.
Great. Thank you. HHS 27.
We've got a couple of comments, questions, et cetera. HH, let's see, P16, require the property owners or developers who displace low-income tenants due to demolitions, substantial rehabilitation, excuse me, change of use or other reasons to provide relocation assistance to such tenants. What would that look like?
This is a place in which you have state law also will man control to what extent you do this. Basically, one way it works is that if someone meets, if a unit is affordable, and they also have a certain income level, and they're being displaced because of action, and the state law... That's where the state law may say, what kind of action does trigger this kind of relocation? Is it because of lack of condition... Of taking care, like it's, you know, it's being right-tagged because it's not in good shape? Or is it because of just redeveloping? So that's changed some over the years, what... Where those lines can be drawn. The idea says, okay, if you have that scenario, then you can require the owner to provide up to a certain amount under the state law. And in some cases, the city has to actually be willing to match that if you're going to ask a private builder to do it. And there's been enough court cases already, it's sort of a floating thing as to what you can do. But it's sort of, you have to meet both... The rent has to be affordable, the person's income, and then there's usually a lot of guidelines as to what you cap it at. And then sometimes there's also a requirement that if you ask the builder to do it, sometimes you have to help do it. And I've been around too long, because I knew the rules black and white 20 years ago. And then there's been all these court rulings, and it's gotten fuzzier and then re-clarified and stuff. So...
Under HSSO, P17, consider market incentives to encourage and/or require affordable housing to meet the needs of people who work and desire to live in Bothell. I struggle with that... With the require. It's kind of the... You know, do you use the carrot or do you use the stick? And I'm more of a, let's use the carrot and use incentives personally.
Right. So the reason for the word require is that, for your consideration, is that if, let's say downtown had been two stories, and you went to six stories, okay? And what do you do in that... So there's a circumstance where you say, oh, the zoning is 20 units the acre, and if you want to build to 24, we get a couple extra. That's a pretty cut-and-dry, you know, voluntary approach. But here, you've taken an area of your town, and you've just changed the zoning because you think it should be changed. Because that's the kind of development you want to see. Now, all of a sudden, you've gone from one profile to a very different profile, and it's still out. Now, because, you know... So some cities have said, well, if you build under the old policies, if you want to go up, you have to give it to us. So it's still technically voluntary. Okay? Some cities have said, we really don't want you to build here. We don't even want that in your equation. We need the housing. We've got a growth we need. We want you at this higher density. And we gave you something for it, so we're just going to require it. And that's what Redmond's done in their downtown and certain neighborhoods. So you're still linking a bonus or incentives for it, but because it's part of your base zoning change for a whole neighborhood, you're saying, because we took the action that has the same effect as you doing on a site-by-site basis, we need it to be required for everybody who builds in that neighborhood. Because we took the action before an individual builder was there. So we had to set the parameters clear to everybody out there. So Totem Lake has done that. Bell Red has used sort of that secondary approach, where they set the base so low, and the new is so high, and you have to do affordability. Given economics, they're pretty much... They might as well be mandatory. But others have said, in Kirkland and Redmond, some Mamish, Issaquah have said, no, in this area, we need... We're doing the higher density. We gave you the incentive. We're going to require and linking with that incentive.
Okay.
So that's the fine-tuning difference between the two.
Yeah. And that explanation really helps, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
And then under P19, ensure that affordable housing is achieved through public incentives or assistance. And I would just suggest we say either public and/or private incentives and assistance.
Which one?
P19.
Or... Oh, because you're saying... What do you mean by private incentives? For private developers, you mean?
Yes.
I think we mean by public, they can be going to private, but it's a public incentive. It's still going to a private person. So it sounds like we needed some wordsmith, because you read it one way, which is understandable. So we need to wordsmith this.
Right. Thank you.
Let me just add my support to Commissioner Stedman's comments, all three of them. And in particular, the require word jumped out at me as well, as to whether we wanted to have that in our language. And I don't want to give us too much work, but the examples of what some of the other municipalities have done is helpful.
Okay, we can do that.
And so if there's a kind of a quick table that could be done as to, here's how some of the other municipalities have incentivized affordable housing, I'm not saying Bothell's going to do exactly what another city's done, but would be helpful for us.
What we can provide you is a table to show you four different ways you can use the up-zone process in voluntary and required ways, and then examples under each one of what cities have done.
Great, thank you. Next page, HHS 28. I had no comments or questions on this page. HHS 29. Seeing none. HHS 30. At this point, on this page, we've finished out the housing actions and we're starting now the human services goals. And I know that I, in particular, was one who wanted to see at least some element of our community services element retained in the overall document. And I supported it being added to our housing services, so to rename that. And I appreciate it, Gary, very much that you're working with me on that. And I believe my fellow commissioners are supportive of this. I really, I just wanted to just lend my comments, I really am supportive of the way that was articulated. It incorporated some of my language, so I support that, of course. But some of the additional policies now on HS31 were ideas I hadn't thought of, and I thought they were good ones.
Okay, good, thank you.
So I really don't, I really don't have anything.
Great, thank you. Bill should take the credit for this because he worked with you on community services. So the work on this section is really Bill's, and I'll pass the credit to him.
Great. I guess I just had one, this is just a real, just detailed question on page 31. We talked about, right there, HS P12. I don't know if I saw that, and just check on that if you would, just to see if that- I think I went back and looked for P12.
A12 or-
P12, and if you look at the right-
Well, there's a reference to it.
There's a reference to it on P32 to HSP12.
Oh, I see.
I looked for HSP12, couldn't see the connection.
Right, up to P31.
What was that?
I think that should be referring up to P31.
I think so, too.
I spotted that.
Right, so anyway, just a typo, but let's get that consistent. Other than that, I have no changes. HHS 32, same thing, we're on human services and I have no adds or changes there. Same with HS33. So that takes us through the goals, policies, and actions for this particular element. At least this was a good first pass at it, and I hope you got some of the feedback from us to kind of, I think, make the next iteration.
Do you feel like you have good feedback, Mike and Arthur? Okay, I think so.
Great. We did have this table, this compliance table, and is that going to be included as an appendix or some type of a, if this becomes more of an electronic?
No, that's purely, that's purely a working document so that we could show you how we think the recommended element is complying with state requirements. It's sort of a checklist.
As I mentioned, I actually looked up the RCW on the manufactured homes as an example. It was very helpful to have those there.
And that's thanks to Arch, that's a tool they've been using with other jurisdictions, and it's been very helpful.
I appreciate that you concluded both King and Snohomish County, planning policies. So I don't have any changes or comments on that. So I think at this point, we're in our agenda, ready to move on from this initial review of the housing and human services element. And Dave, if you're ready to go forward with our, your presentation of the accessory dwelling unit code amendments, and my understanding is you want to kind of make a first pass at this topic with us and get some initial comments, so hopefully we can wrap this up in the next ten or fifteen minutes.
Yeah, and actually, Arthur prepared this memo on the ADUs. I don't believe you have any PowerPoint presentation, so I've put the memo with the discussion points up here on the screen, and-
Understood.
And then I also have, I can put the actual code link, which we haven't recommended any amendments at this point yet, but-
Understood, so I, and I think my fellow commissioners did as well, read the memo as well as the attachment. And on, actually, the second page of the memo is where you asked some specific questions or feedback from us. "What do you see as the purpose value or concerns with allowing ADUs in the city? See attached article." Any comments from the commissioners on that particular question?
Well, I think there is great value in permitting ADUs within the city. I mean, particularly as it pertains to low-income, lower-income, as well as senior housing.
I would really reiterate that. I'm personally, and the members of the community that I represent and know are very supportive of ADUs. I think we want to have some guidelines that meet not only our state law, but also, you know, architectural consistency and some things like that, as well as a range of costs. But as a general approach and an idea of ADUs, I'm very supportive of it. Commissioner Clark?
I just want to ask you two, in your experience working with other jurisdiction, how does the, how does the code in Bothell compare in terms of promoting or encouraging ADUs?
So that's one of the questions that we sort of have, if you would like to see something like that. We have, we have something like that that we can bring, so we can give you something more detailed. But from a general point of view, I have worked with a lot of the cities on this in East King County over the years. And I would say the general philosophy that we've seen, because every once in a while, we get everybody together and some of our work is done because we're helping you, because you see it. Others is, we see everybody asking the same question. And about ten years ago, everybody said, "We want ADUs." I mean, we see them as fitting in, and I don't want to answer all, I want to hear you guys say what you think. Enough so that if you go to our website, you will see a ton of information geared towards homeowners if they want to add an ADU. Now, it wasn't Arch's idea, it was all of our members counsel saying, "We allow them, but what more can we do to get the count up? Because we've seen what we have seems to work pretty well." We want to give you the chance to have that conversation, too, because your little comments that you make here are helping me prepare, what are the things, that balancing act between, yeah, we like them, but we want them to be done right, okay? And so that's why I'm not leading too much right now. We want to hear what you just say, because what I've found is, I'll then be able to talk with you and lay out a game plan that try to balance the two. And that's what I see my job being. So first, we want to understand where you see the value is, and at the same time also where some of the checks need to be so that you feel it's good for the community. And we will bring that chart, too, when we come back.
Okay.
Gary, how many, do we have a permitting process for ADUs?
We do. I was going to, I was going to tag on to Arthur's comments and say that from a staff perspective, the reason we took this proposed code amendment to council on the docket last year was that, in our experience, our regulations are restrictive enough, we feel at present, that we're not seeing people come in for ADU permits. We think they're probably being done, but they're being done illegally. Simply because, and Eric is a builder, you can tell me if this is your experience, our restrictions are restrictive enough that you simply can't get enough floor area in an ADU to make them worthwhile going through the permit process. Simple as that. So our thought was that we need to revisit the regulations to make them attractive enough to people to want to do and go through the permit process and still meet the community's concerns about fitting in. Which is where Arthur was talking about.
And some of the answer can be the permitting process, it doesn't have to be to allow really large units necessarily, other cities, but you'll show you that in the chart we have. There's about seven or eight different elements that we have a comparison between different cities. And I would agree, you have some elements, not too bad. You have some elements, I could say, we can show you examples where it's a little different and stuff. So that's, you know, so we'll be able to help walk you through all different specific ideas and issues.
Couple of questions. One is, if they're out there, do we want to know that they're out there? And if we do, could we create a process where we, like, give them a permit after the fact? So we can get these permitted, so we know what's out there, so we have an idea? If we're going to loosen them up, do we, so it seems to me we want to know that they're there. And if we do, we want to get them permitted, I think. I'm just throwing this out, and I'm, so I want to go through this process. If we're trying to get them, we should have them permitted. So, and then, and through that process, I think we should have that, a way to get those ones that aren't out there and get it out there on, hey, if you have one, these are criteria we have, we loosen it up or whatever it is, so we know really what we have, because I've heard rumors that we've had two, you know, prior to our last reiteration, we had one or two in the ten years prior to this. Which I know that's not accurate, I just know that for a fact.
Yeah, we've literally received, I think, two permit applications for them in the past ten or fifteen years.
So we know that's not the truth. So what we really should do is find out what we have, or try to bring those in and get them permitted. Because it helps for insurance reasons, these people that have built these things. I mean, insurance companies, if you build them illegally, if it's illegal and a fire, you have, you can have all kinds of issues with these people out here. So, I mean, just for our citywide, you know, what we have, you know, the assessor probably, the assessor probably knows how many, you know, the ADUs we have out there better than we do, because they go out there and look at those buildings. So I'm thinking, if we do this, let's do it globally if we can. I mean, if we're going to make it work, we've, the last time we did this, we kicked the can, is what we did. We gave them a little bit, but we really didn't address it. And we should address it now, and I think we have more of a willingness to do that now, and I think we should try to do it, do a good job.
So what we can bring you is, some cities have been very explicit about creating windows for existing and trying to make it even, a little bit even easier. And you've laid out one of the main, you know, it's like, you have to potentially show value to the homeowner as well for why they would want to come in. And then you also have to make them comfortable that it's not going to be, they're going to be sorry they did, you know, kind of thing. So we have had a couple of cities who explicitly dealt with that. So we'll bring in examples of how they dealt with it. And it's going to be hard to know how much is out there, and I think the question almost becomes, do you really need to know how many? If you, you know, if everybody who's around town knows they're out there. The cities that we had do it, which were Mercer Island and Kirkland, had the most effective program for bringing in existing. We didn't go out and count it, they just, everybody kind of knew they were out there. And sure enough, the two months before the deadline, they had a huge, you know, increase and stuff. So we can come and have a whole conversation on that topic with you and some ideas and how to look at that. There is life safety issues in that, you know, so the city's motivated by life safety. Homeowners can be motivated by, "I've owned them, be able to go to a bank," you know? And that's, it's really funny, banks still have not completely come around to understanding and accepting, but yet the Realtor community is definitely coming around on it. And so I can, we'll have a whole, we'll have all kinds of information to touch on that topic and some thoughts.
Really, really good discussion, and I just really support it. And I think that there, these homeowners that have created these ADUs for various reasons, a parent, a child, had, you know, good intentions, but who knows what, you know, like Commissioner Gaston was saying, whether they are at code with regards to, you know, fire risk. Off-street parking becomes another issue. So I thought, I actually thought the document that you provided us was very good and kind of initial pass on a lot of the issues. And I would be curious as to how, you mentioned Mercer Island and Kirkland have kind of encouraged us to kind of have a better inventory of what ADUs we have out there. And then, you know, have it become something that our city is really supporting getting done. The only thing I'll add, the only question that I had on the, both the memo as well as the table, Dave, was, this is on page, this is the second page of the table. And this is where you kind of tried to tell us how to calculate, this is the item D, yeah, that page. Under item, well, actually it was one and two. One was ten percent, increased the floor area by ten percent, and the other was forty percent of the floor area, et cetera, et cetera. I tried to calculate this out, and I found it, I couldn't do it. And so maybe kind of give us an example or something of what would be in compliance.
So what I think-
Did you guys have that kind of similar?
I would echo that.
I got the calculator out and I couldn't pull it off.
I can't figure it out either.
So what we're hearing is, one of the things that might need some work is clarity on how you know what you can do.
That may be why there's only been two applications in the last fifteen years, because nobody knows what the criteria is.
Yeah, so just maybe an example of, yeah, you had that in there, a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot home, but I tried to calculate it and I couldn't.
Right.
So anyway, a little more clarity on that, so.
All right.
Good.
And actually, that's another question is, is not just clarifying what we're saying here, but is there a simpler way to-
Just a little better tool or a simpler way?
To do that.
Exactly.
And the other thing I raised in the, I did add to the memo was the fact that under D here, this says, "A primary detached dwelling unit may be expanded to accommodate an accessory dwelling unit." So that, all of these size limitations, the way it's written, the letter of the code, only applies to expanding existing. It doesn't really apply to an accessory dwelling unit created in a new housing. And it's not clear if that was intentional, and so that's another question for commission. Should we have different size limitations for existing versus new? Or should it be consistent across the board?
Any feedback for him on that question?
I think that's a great question, I think, I'm not sure about that either.
We'll give you some stuff for that.
Yeah.
Ideas.
I agree, so important, but I don't, I don't have a clear direction for you on that tonight.
I have one more question for you before, on item A, it's, I guess, B for A. What is the reason why the primary dwelling unit is required to be owner-occupied? Is there-
So that's why we're going to bring you some options, but the issue of some level of owner-occupancy, you know, some cities say one of the units. So if you're asking the basic question of why owner-occupancy, that's sort of one of the ideas, and a lot of cities have this, including like Mercer Island, is the idea is this is intended to be an accessory use. You know, if you allow both home units to be rented out, then are you creating something different? So this is one of those balancing act questions. And so now, what some cities have said is, either of the units be owner-occupied, rather than just this one, it's only one of, it's very clear which one must be owner-occupied. And so that's one of those balancing act things that we haven't found to be a real issue, because if the intention is what accessory dwelling is about in general, then it typically isn't an issue. And there it creates one of the great protections to the neighborhood. The owner's there. So, you know, you worry about noise or parking or everything like that. The simple answer is, yeah, the owner's living with it, more than you are. And so it becomes one of those, it's sort of consistent with the whole philosophy about why these were allowed in in the first place. So if that's the reason why we're allowing them in in the first place, then why don't we do something to sort of help make sure that they're used for the reason we allowed them in the first place?
Yeah, I think it's a good point. And another comment is just, in many instances that I've known about in, not in Bothell and outside of Bothell, is it starts out for a parent or a child, as I mentioned, or a family member, or whatever. Then that person moves on, and now they're renting it.
Yes.
And they may or may not even know that they're subject to a whole law around landlord and tenancy and everything associated with that, and risks and legal obligations that go with being a landlord. And I think having an owner occupied is going to kind of keep the flavor of what we're really trying to achieve here. So I, I get your comment.
Okay, but following up on that, in the event that the, that the dwelling is sold to a new owner, what's the process to make sure that it's then owner-occupied?
So we will bring you something on that point.
And is this basically a duplex now?
Well, exactly.
And so that's where many cities, again, and this is where, what are reasonable things to do? That, do they scare people away, or are they reasonable things to do? And most cities have a register, there's a covenant, very simple document that's recorded. So when they buy the home, they know what the deal is and things like, so there's some ways, and we'll bring you some thoughts on that.
Yep.
Great.
Isn't, isn't one of the reasons for having an accessory dwelling unit, though, to, there's an affordable- an affordable housing aspect to this, right? That can be offered to somebody at a lower rent? And also probably help offset the cost of a mortgage or something for the primary owner? Is that-
I have so many personal stories about ADUs that fit every profile you're describing in every situation. I've lived in them, I've owned them, I've, the whole thing. And yes, what happens is, there is an affordability component, and what I was going to add it towards the end after hearing your comments is, we put in some figures there about Mercer Island's ratio of ADUs to single-family homes versus your ratio, and Mercer Island stands out. Mercer Island decided when GMA kicked in, this was how they were going to do their affordable housing. And so they, when they talked about it, they acknowledged, and so they did everything they could to encourage, and they tried to create a culture around it. But another benefit to you as a city for having this work is, it's a way to show you're trying to address a wide range of needs in your community. The other thing that's interesting about ADUs is, from analysis and stuff that I've seen, the same space in an ADU will probably rent for 90 to 80% of what that same space would be in a regular apartment building. So it's, it creates a relatively form, and so, in this county, we just automatically count every ADU with no rent restrictions on them as automatically considered moderate income housing. Just because its general nature is that way. And I can tell you all kinds of reasons why the rents are lower, but we can do it another night, but-
Sure.
So all the things you just raised are all true in their own ways, and your point is right on mark. They almost always get built originally for some personal reason, but then, once they're there, they morph into all other kinds of things in the future. And so that, why do you want to have it registered, but also it creates opportunity for affordability? So, yeah, there's, they have a life typically.
Good. Yes, Dave? Just one other question. We didn't put it in the memo, and I was curious whether it would come up in, in your discussion. But one question you, you might want to grapple with is whether we should allow detached accessory dwelling units, or backyard cottages, as they're called in Seattle, or lane houses, as they're called in Vancouver. And we can certainly bring more information about how other communities have, have allowed those.
Yeah, you're right, that didn't come up, but personally, I would be interested in how other cities have grappled with both detached and detached. So thanks for bringing that up, and yes, I would.
Many jurisdictions in East King County allow detached. You'll still see, so most allow them. You'll still see the vast majority will be within the primary unit, or maybe a garage unit or something like that. It's pretty rare to see the full new construction, just because of the economics and costs. It's a lot easier to work with existing space and stuff, but we'll, we'll show you, but a lot of cities allow that to occur.
Great. At this point, we're going to move on in our agenda. We will continue the public hearing on these two elements later on in the year. But moving on in our agenda, we do not have a study session this evening. I do not, I'm not aware of any old business. Gary or Dave, any reports from staff for us?
I have none unless Dave does.
I have none either. I would remind you, you should continue the hearing on the periodic plan and code update to July 2nd, when we'll have a third review of transportation. Is that right, third or fourth? Third, I believe.
Let me just make sure I understand what you're, the, yeah, we will do that. You're right, let's, let's go ahead and do that. Let's do a motion to continue.
Actually, July 2nd, sorry.
Yeah, continue the public hearing on the periodic plan and code element. In fact, I'll go ahead and articulate it. So if I could hear a motion to continue the public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code element to July 2nd.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Any, no other reports from staff? With regards to the next meeting, my understanding is we do, even though the July 4th holiday is coming soon on that heels of July 2nd, we will have a quorum, so we will have a meeting on July 2nd. I've also been informed, Commissioners Cabe and Batuello this evening were absent and excused, so let the record show that. Any other reports or information from members? Hearing none. A motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn?
Say it.
We are adjourned.